All to order tonight's meeting. Normally it's our regular council meeting with the agenda, but tonight preceding that is a public hearing. So let me uh give you the official text for that. We'll before our regular scheduled council meeting, we'll first have a public here for the fiscal year 2023. Twenty. Just turned it on, sorry. Public hearing for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget amendment for the city of Malden. This public hearing is an opportunity for city council to hear from the public any comments on the proposed revisions to the FY 2024 operating budget for the fiscal year that began July the first, 2023, and will be ending on June the 30th. Notice that this public hearing was published in a newspaper of general circulation for our community as required by law. The amended budget include an additional programmatic funding for grants, state appropriations, insurance proceeds, and other revenues. The amended budget includes council approved capital projects such as sports center equipment, fire department, quick response vehicles, strategic plan, branding for trails and the Malden Gateway Bridge, roof replacements at City Hall, and more. A copy of the proposed budget amendment has been on filed in the office of the city administrator and is available on the city's website. At this time, I'd like to recognize anyone with us here tonight or online wishing to make a comment during this public hearing. If you just step forward to be recognized at the podium, be sure the little green light or the red lights turn green in your live or anyone online. No one is online. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to make public comment? Seeing a hearing none. Not hearing anything else, then I'm going to proceed to close the public hearing. So having provided an opportunity for all those present and online to be heard and seeing no others, I will close this public hearing for the FY 2023, 2024 budget amendment for the city of Malden. Closed. All right, we will move directly on now. So we'll do this again. We'll now call to order our city Malden regular scheduled council meeting for June the 17th, 2024. That the records reflect that all council members are present along with our city administrator, our city clerk, various department heads. Our special guest, city attorney tonight, Mr. Evan Bramhoff. Appreciate him being in attendance here and along with your host, the mayor. So appreciate y'all being here. Don't see our chamber, so she's not here, so she's probably still recuperating from 105 degree temperature at the car show at Bridgeway over Saturday, so understand it. We'll proceed to our invocation, our pledge of allegiance, Councilman Steenback.
You bow your heads with me. God, thanks so much for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. Lord, please help us to do it with humility and wisdom. Would help us to lead in the way that you led. And God, please continue to bless and watch over those that serve our city and bless our city and continue to help us make good decisions. We thank you and we love you in your name, I pray. Amen.
Stand. And if you would. Let me make a legion to the flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Mr. Steenback. Proclamation presentations, we don't have any this month. Next item before us is reading an approval of the minutes for city council meeting of May 20th, 2024. Those are in your packet that you should have had all weekend to look over. Any comments, adjustments, corrections, clarifications? Seeing none, this council have a motion.
Motion for approval is presented.
I have a motion from Mr. Matney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds. Any other discussion? You're none all is in favor of approving the minutes as submitted in May 2024, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. You're none minutes are approved as submitted. Now we are to our first public comment period for our citizens and interested parties. The first public comment is reserved for any comments you might have on the agenda tonight. No one has. No one has signed up, so we will move right along then. Next is a report from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a couple of things for council and the public tonight. First of all, the city of Malden will host its first Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June 22nd from 2:00 to 6:00 PM at the Malden Cultural Center, outdoor amphitheater and grounds. A free, family-friendly event will feature live performances, food trucks, market vendors, and children's activities in a celebration of Black history and culture that is intended for all community members to enjoy. The event will include a variety of entertainment and live performances, including spoken word by Moody Black, music by gospel choir Larry McCullough and chosen and chosen generation. Nineties hit from the cast of Malden Theater Company's Bring Back the Nineties Show, which was fabulous for those who who came out and was able to attend that. Dance performances by T-Motion's Dance Studio and Imani Dance Group and music from DJ Uni. There will also be several food trucks on site, more than 25 market vendors, beer and wine from Growler House, an educational experience with information about Black history in Malden, and children's activities including face painting, yard games, a playground, and Lego station by bricks and minifigs. Guests are encouraged to bring lawn chairs and blankets, and from the weather report, it's going to be hot, so bring plenty of water too. The other item I wanted to mention tonight is a program, new program by Malden Police Department, Community Division. They will be hosting an event called Pause and Reflect throughout the month of July. It goes in line with our current event, Linda Paw, that is held in the fall. MPD is looking to collect donations such as food, toys, bedding, et cetera, for animals in need. At the event, end of the event, the donations will be distributed to our canine partner facilities throughout the area that help Malden PD from time to time with animals rescued in Malden. Donation boxes will be hosted in various public facilities throughout the city from July 1st through 31st, including City Hall, Sports Center, and our new fire station headquarters. We thank you all for those who support that effort and all of our efforts at MPD. Last two little things, wanted to mention one, that exit grill is now open, so that was exciting to see their grand opening last week. And then MetLife just celebrated 50 years in South Carolina, and they have an office over here in the city. And we were able to join them last week and congratulate them on 50 years in serving our community, but also the greater South Carolina community as well. And that's my report.
Next item, reports from our standing committees, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You were all in attendance to the public hearing right before the meeting here, so I appreciate you all showing up for that. That was for amendment we have coming up later on. One item I did want to mention was the triple crown winner for our financial department again. The city was notified this week that it once again has earned the distinguished budget presentation award, the certificate of achievement or excellence in financial reporting, and the popular annual financial report award, all from the Government Finance Officers Association. So this, I don't know how many years this has been done, but it's been a lot, so certainly appreciate Ms. Abric Rumbi, who I'm sure is here and her hard work. So all of that goes into the budget, all of the time from the city administrator, all the way down to the department heads. All that work goes into this, and we certainly appreciate it. So, but we're not the only one, not the only ones. The Government Finance Officers Association also recognized what a great job Ms. Abric Rumbi does. So thank you, Ms. Abric Rumbi. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Public safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to highlight the fire department. I'll just read this to you briefly. The city of Malden Fire Department has received the Fire Safe South Carolina Community Award for the third year in a row. The city was one of 154 departments across South Carolina receiving the award. To earn the Fire Safe South Carolina designation, fire departments must complete courses to improve data quality, train community partners to deliver in-home safety visits, and further develop the skills through online National Fire Academy courses in risk reduction and assessment. Congratulations to Chief McHone and all the men and women of the Malden Fire Department for this award and for their commitment to our community. I know training has been a big part of our fire department for the last several years, so shout out to you guys, and again, many thanks. One other quick note, and I hope I don't embarrass anyone here, but our clerk of court, Mr. Ato, she has a intern, Carson, who's with us for the summer. And Carson has been attending our committee meetings and our council meetings. And last, last month, I said, Mr. Ato, who is that? And she enlightened me, so I was impressed that she had a sidekick with her. So thank you, Carson, for absorbing everything that you can about the judicial system. I understand you want to learn as much as you can while you're here with us in the city of Malden. And of course, Mayor, there's one thing that I have to point out. I hear he pulls for the other team, but I forgive him for that. So you will like that. Mr. Matney as well. So welcome, Carson, and thank you for for coming to our meetings. It's been noticed. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Ms. King. Well, the worst, Mr. Craylon.
Nothing shared this time.
Sir. Economic planning involvement, Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mayor. Summer camps at the cultural center are in full swing, and that included the leading player showcase this past Friday. Amped Up Fridays continues. This week we have featuring the Soul Purpose Band, which is a blend of acoustic and electric funk and soul, R&B, country, and rock. The new front steps at the cultural center have been built and are ready for use. Ms. King will love to know that in addition to the new concrete toe plates and handrails, new lighting was added for safer utilization at night. The electrical upgrades are complete around the amphitheater, and these upgrades will allow for better power draw for our annual Sui BBQ cook-off and the other festivities on the amphitheater grounds. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Matney. Building codes, Mr. Steenback.
There'll be plenty for me. You'll hear plenty for me to, if there's anything else I have to report at this time.
Thanks. So your, yeah, your name appears on our agenda quite often. Thank you, sir. Save your breath here. Recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to yield my time back to Mr. Steenback because I understand that his his child had a had a good outing with the football program.
Oh, yes, yes. Actually, we, I was, had the privilege of taking one of three flag football All-Star teams up to Rock Hill this past, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, and was able to be part of the Malden sweep of the Rock Hill teams as eight U, 10 U, and 12 U all took the trophies and came home. So it was a lot of fun. It was not too terribly hot. And W's all around, so it was a good time.
Good coaching and good leadership, Mr. Allgood. Take it when you can get it. Thank you, sir. Next item for us is unfinished business, ordinances on second reading. Ms. Miller.
We have several ordinances for second reading tonight. The first one is an ordinance to rezonate a property consisting of approximately 3.3 acres located at Miller Road.
That's it.
That's it. That's all I have.
All right, that's coming from BDS, Mr. Steenback.
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion on second reading for the ordinance to rezone the property consisting of approximately 3.3 acres located at Miller Road.
Motion, Mr. Steenback. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Matney. Any discussion? You're none, all those in favor of the motion for annex the rezoning of three acre property along Miller Road in the second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. To Ms. Miller.
Next ordinance for second reading is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by the city of Malden and located at Adams Mill Road by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of R-15 residential.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Back to you, Mr. Steenback.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion on second reading of an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by the city of Malden and located at Adams Mill Road by 100% petition method and to establish the zoning classification of R-15 residential for said property.
Mr. Steenback, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion? You're none, all those in favor of the motion for the annexation of 0.2 acres at Adams Mill Road and request a zoning of R-15, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. All right, Ms. Miller.
Next ordinance for second reading is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by the city of Malden and located at Fowler Circle by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of R-20 residential for said property.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Let's see, I believe that's back at BDS, Mr. Steenback.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make the motion on second reading of an ordinance to provide for the annexation of the property owned by the city of Malden and located at Fowler Circle by 100% petition method and establish a zoning classification of R-20 residential for said property.
Thank you, Mr. Steenback. There's a motion, there's a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Matney. Any discussion? You're none, all those in favor of the motion for annexation of 10.6 acres at Fowler Circle with a zoning of R-20 residential, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Ms. Miller.
Next ordinance for second reading is an amendment to the Malden Land Development Regulations Establishing Procedures for Subdivisions.
Mr. Steenback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion on second reading for an amendment to the Malden Land Development Regulations Establishing Procedures for Subdivisions and to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine.
Okay. Have a motion, Mr. Steenback. Is there a second? Did we miss something?
I was just saying that we don't need to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine anymore, so you can use that ordinance motion up to the period before it. Because that was just necessary on the first time we were looking at it.
All right. Have a motion, Mr. Steenback. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Matney. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt on second reading the changes to our land development regulations, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Miller.
Next ordinance for second reading is the ordinance for the 2023, 2024 budget amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Back to you, Mr. Reynolds.
My turn, finally. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve on second reading the FY 23 slash 24 budget amendment ordinance as presented.
I have a motion, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any discussion?
One comment, Mr. Mayor. The public hearing was held for this prior to this meeting. It was well attended and not a lot of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. You're no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion on second reading to adopt the FY 24 budget amendments ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries you now. Ms. Miller.
Next ordinance for second reading is an ordinance for the 2024, 2025 budget.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve on second reading the fiscal year 24, 25 budget as presented, and I'll hold my comments till discussion.
I have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King. Any comments, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I've said a couple of other times, lots of hard work, not just from this council, but staff all the way down to superintendents, department heads, every person in the city works hard for this budget. It's a good budget that makes investments in the future of the city and makes investments in patrol officers, firefighters, sanitation drivers, equipment to equip our city to be prepared, not just for this next year, but many years to come. So it's a good budget. I appreciate everybody's work. I appreciate everybody's time. There were three or four budget workshops that were well attended by all of you with lots of good conversations. So I sincerely appreciate it from all of, from this body, how everybody carried themselves in those budgets, because budgets can be tricky and difficult and certainly in in times where we're looking to make substantial investments, it can be tricky and difficult and tempers can flare. So I was very appreciative that everybody had great comments throughout all the workshops. We worked hard with staff to make sure that we've got a budget that will move the city to the future. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds, any other discussion? You're none, all those in favor of the motion to adopt on second reading our fiscal year 2025 budget ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Right. Next item coming before us is coming before us at, before the committee of the whole. So I would like council to entertain a motion to consider the next item via the informal method for committee of the whole.
So moved.
Question for Mr. Matney. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King. Any discussion? You're none, all those in favor of consideration of the next item, as committee of the whole say aye.
Aye.
It's like sign. Hearing none, we will consider ourselves via the informal method. Item before us is ordinance for Duke Energy Easement. I believe that will require some explanation from Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, on this item, we were going to take it up as second reading tonight. However, though approval of the ordinance is necessary to convey the easement, staffers requesting council hold this item on the floor at second reading. This request is necessary as Duke continues with various changes to its utility plan for underground utilities along Jenkins Street and Jenkins Court. Therefore, we didn't want to issue a final reading of this ordinance to convey that interest that the city has if they come back and abandon their idea for their easement. The easement, again, would cover the transition of overhead transmission lines to buried, a combination of buried, underground with had-mounted equipment and overhead. While that may still be of interest to the city, right now, we're just asking to hold this until they finalize their plan. So that way, we don't give away something we wouldn't otherwise need to give away.
So that I would ask council to entertain a motion to hold. Now, holding on the floor basically means we don't take any action tonight, but it will come back next month on our agenda. So let's just hold in for one more month till then we'll be asked to take action again. So pleasure, council.
Mayor, move. We hold the item on the floor.
Have a motion to hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Second in stereo for Mr. Craylon, and I heard somebody over here on the right, Mr. Allgood. Cindy will take her pick as she listens to the recording. All right, any discussion? You're none, all those in favor of the motion to hold the item Duke Energy Easement before us, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous to hold. Next item for us will be first reading, Ms. Miller, Mr. Matney.
Mayor, because of a professional relationship I have with the applicant, I need to recuse myself from any discussions, debates, votes until final action is taken on this item.
Sir. And let the record reflect that we'll leave chamber.
We have two ordinances for first reading tonight. The first one is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a tract consisting of approximately 23.2 acres located at Conesty Road and Lakewood Drive by 100% petition method and to establish a zoning classification of S1 for said tract.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. I believe this will be coming from BDS, Mr. Steenback.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we make a motion to ordinance to provide for the annexation of track of a tract consisting of approximately the 23.2 acres located at Conesty Road and Lakewood Drive. There are two tax map parcels, M013 dot zero two dash one dash zero zero eight dot zero one and M013 dash zero two dash zero one dash zero zero eight dot zero two by the 100% petition method and to establish the zoning classification of S1 for that tract.
Thank you, Mr. Steenback. Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Craylon. Any discussion? Just received a text message saying they would like more information on where this is at. So for the record, I'll try to be, if you go down West Butler and you veer off left at Conesty Road, the property on your left, right there in front of the Missionary Baptist Church. On Conesty Road to your left, you go down approximately a hundred yards, there'll be a road back to your left called Lakewood Drive. So you turn left on that, and the property will be on your left, and it comes up and it's contiguous at Rose Circle and Lakewood Drive property that we annexed a couple of years ago. So that's kind of where it's at. Any other comments, discussions? You're none, all those in favor of approval of the ordinance and annexation of 23.2 acres at Conesty Road and Lakewood Drive with the two tax map ID numbers Mr. Steenback read out, and with a zoning of S1, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries six zero. I believe we can strike Mr. Matney back in. All right, Ms. Miller.
Last ordinance for first reading is a ordinance for the Indigo Point Pump Station Fee.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I believe that's coming from finance, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Indigo Point Pump Station Fee. Ordinants. I should add on there.
All right, have a motion from Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Craylon. Any discussion?
One comment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last remaining lot in the subdivision. As you recall, we've done this every year since twenty twenty, bringing, as we bring that pump station online. As those homes came online, we were adopting each tax parcel number each fiscal year. This is the last remaining parcel in that, which is the pool house, the pool and the clubhouse. So this is the last time we'll have to do this, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Questions? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance to establish the pump station fee at Indigo Point, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Here none. The motion carries unanimous.
First.
Yeah, go ahead.
First standing committee item is appointments to planning commission and zoning board of appeals.
Okay, let's see. This is coming from Mr. Steinbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for the reappointment of Mr. Estridge to the planning commission, Mr. Bixler also to the planning commission, Mr. Centelli to the zoning board of appeals and Mr. Parks to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Steinbach. Is there a second?
Second.
That was unanimous. Let you pick that one. I'm gonna put Mattney. I think I heard that one. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the appointment, reappointment of the members to the planning commission and the zoning board of appeal as stated by Mr. Steinbach, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Here none. The motion carries unanimous. Ms. Miller.
Next item is a resolution to donate hand tools to Golden Strip Career Center Fire Program.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Believe we have a new plan. Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution for authorization to proceed on the disposal of old and/or damaged equipment by the way of donation to the Golden Strip, Golden Strip Career Center.
Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Allgood. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the resolution for disposable by way of donation of various hand tools to Golden Strip Career Center, say aye.
Aye.
Likes, those opposed like sign. Here none. The motion carries unanimous. We have another item coming before us as the committee of the whole via the informal method. Pleasure, council?
So moved.
I have a motion, Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, but Mr. Crayton. I think my left ear works better than my right ears. If I get it wrong, if I get it wrong, y'all just speak right up. Okay, go.
We're gonna have all kinds of additions in the minutes.
All right, all those in favor of the committee of the whole via the informal method, say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Here none. We will consider ourselves to consider the next item via the informal method. You want me to introduce that?
This is a memorandum of agreement with SC DOT for utility relocation.
Pleasure of council.
Right.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion authorizing city, uh, city to authorize, sorry, city council to authorize the city of Malden memorandum of agreement sewer relocation with the South Carolina Department of Defense.
Thank you, Mr. Crayton. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard him that time. I'm gonna give that one to Mr. Allgood. All right, I have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Questions, Mayor?
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I presume that Legal has reviewed this?
Yes, Legal's reviewed it, uh, whatever this with Daniel, Mr. Hughes, and everything seems to be fine with this agreement.
Thank you, Legal.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Here none. All those in favor of motion to accept the memorandum of agreement to approve the South Carolina DOT memorandum agreement for the Butler Road sewer relocation on their building a better Butler project coming soon to a location near you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Here none. The motion carries. We are now back to the next item on our agenda. This public comment, public comment in this section is open to anyone who had anything they would like to speak to the good of the city of Malden or the bad of the city of Malden, but for the city of Malden. Could come to the podium. Anyone signed? No one signed up? Anybody online? That's a no also. All right, so we did a good job tonight, guys. Thank you very much. Next item before us is a consideration of an executive session, economic development. Mr. Mattney.
Thank you, Mayor. Move. We enter executive session to consider an economic development matter related to city center village allowed under section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight two.
All right, I have a motion for Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr., yeah, Steinbach. I didn't forget you. I got you. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of a motion to enter executive session to consider an economic development matter related to city center village is allowed by state statute section thirty dash four dash seventy-eight two as stated by Mr. Mattney, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed like sign. Here none. We will, uh, not really adjourn. We will move into executive session upstairs in the conference room at approximately seven forty. Back to wait. We will finish that briefing and we will come back and reconvene here.
Right, we reconvene back in chambers at approximately 8:35 PM. Mr. Mattany, report out for us.
Thank you, Mayor, coming back into open session, 8:35 PM. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Mr. Mattany. Next item on the agenda is possible action on items discussed in executive session. You're none, we move on to council concerns. You're none, what's council's pleasure on adjournment?
It's removed.
Motion is a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Creiling, all those in your discussion. You're none, all those who favor adjournments say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign here, none, we stand adjourned, 8:36.